Okay, folks, it is now six o'clock, actually 6:02, so I will call the regularly scheduled meeting of the common council to order. It is Tuesday, September 9th, and we are in the council chambers in the city of Platteville, and Collette will start with roll call.
Tony McFall.
Barbara Dos. Here.
Bob Gates.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Kathy Cobb.
Here.
Lynn Parrot.
Here.
Okay, we have consideration of the consent agenda next. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion and action. We have council minutes from August 21st special meeting, from the August 26th special meeting, I believe those both had to do with strategic planning. Is that correct? Yes. And then from the August 26th regular meeting, we have payment of bills, we have the financial report for August. I have no appointments tonight to boards or commissions. We have licenses, the one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as we're in your packet, and then Resolution 25-11, which is the application for exemption from the levy of any county library tax. I would take a motion.
I move to approve all items.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Bob to approve the consent agenda as presented. Collette will vote.
McFall.
Dos. Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Cobb.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, and I want to start tonight by publicly saying thank you to all of those people who were involved in the activities this past weekend, whether they were parades, whether they were performances, whether they were the historic reenactment, weather, or whatever it was. It takes a village to make an event like that go well, and I thought it went relatively well. It was nice then for once. We had okay weather. We didn't have any rain. It was a little chilly, but we got through that. You can always, so thank you to all. I know that everyone is involved from, it just takes a lot of people to run that event. So thanks for a job well done. I think a lot of people had a lot of good time.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I wanted to thank those people that voted. My church, Community E-Free, won the first place for the float, and my grandbabies were flipping and dancing. Okay, there we go.
Well, I wanted to know who won first place. There it is. Okay, well, I assume there was a huge prize, a huge trophy associated with that.
I don't even know. Did you see the envelope? No, I'm just playing. I don't know. I don't know what.
No, probably not.
No tiara, for sure.
But I thought maybe they'd give you, you know, like, the U.S. Open Trophy from 1950 or something, you know, some trophy from, yes, some trophy from someplace, anyway. Okay, so that was really good. Anybody else with announcements? Cody? Are you guys selling pasties?
Yes, well, since I have the mic, I will say thank you for everyone who came out to the historic reenactment. It was a great year again. The weather was okay, no rain at least. And then upcoming, the Friends of the Museum do have their Cornish pasty fundraiser, so that you can purchase those until October 14th. And then one last thing, we are rededicating the garden out front of the museum. That was in honor of Gail and Wesley Cobb. We did get some new signage for that, so we are going to be rededicating that garden September 20th, and there will be a plant sale to follow, or at least the Friends will be doing that.
And my recollection is that Wes Cobb spent a lot of time on the pedal, pedal thing, cutting, cutting little...
Yep, the jigsaw.
Oh, is that what?
The pedal jigsaw.
Pedal jigsaw. I know it's a pedal thing. Yeah, okay, whatever. Okay, anybody else?
I would maybe just make a plug. Thank you for everyone that has been filling out our community's comprehensive plan survey. For those of you that have not, it is available off of our website. If you go to the main page, you'll be able to find the track down. Want to get as much input as we can. And then a reminder that our open houses for those begin on September 17th, the first one being at the library, starting at 3:00 p.m. and running to 6:00 p.m. The second one thereafter is going to be at the Brodsky Center on September 25th, running 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Madam Chair.
All right, we'll move on to the reports section. The reports in your packet were the tourism committee report, Kathy. Water and Sewer, I have nothing to add. Do you have anything to add, Ken?
Nothing to add to that.
Police and Fire Commission, Kathy.
Nothing further.
Okay, other reports in our packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report for August, the Airport Financial Report for August, and the Department Progress Reports. Anybody with questions on any of those reports?
I wanted to bring up about the Tourism Committee, or maybe going back, but the Tourism Committee had a meeting May 16th, and let's see, there was, we went through this, and there was a historical marker that was dedicated on June 23rd. Have we gone through that? Now, the other thing I wanted to ask about, and I've brought this up before, and this is the City of Platteville Room Tax. So the Room Tax, looking at 2025, it says that the first quarter, the city part was $10,088.73, Tourism Commission, $25,208.92, and motel was $715.10. So my question is, going back to the previous page, I have, that's quoted in my book, it's page 117, it says that the city gets 28% of the Platteville portion. And so why it set up, it set up that, the motel, motels have a 2% administrative fee that they get, and that was $715.10, and the City of Platteville gets 28%. So my question is, who is getting the $10,088.73?
So I assume Ken's question is, what is the budget line for the City of Platteville portion, the $10,088.73? Where does that budget lie? Where does that revenue fall into our budget?
Because at one time, I had a city manager that said that the money goes, doesn't go to the City of Platteville, goes to another thing. I think this was supposed to be promotion of the Tourism Commission, Tourism Commission. Now, who knows the truth on this?
I can give you that information, sir. So we have, the breakdown is 2%, the administrative fee is kept by the state, and then the 28% is retained by the city, and that is in the general fund, and the 70% is paid to the Chamber of Commerce for tourism and promotion and for visitor services.
So Ken, the motel administrative cost is kept by the state. It doesn't go to the motels. It goes to fund the state's expenses to operate this program.
Correct.
Which probably means they have to cut checks to maybe, do we cut a check to the tourism entity?
Yes, we do.
And so they have to cut a check to us, and then we have to cut a check to someone else.
Correct.
So I'm not exactly sure that's correct. I think the way I understood, because I was on board when that ordinance was adopted, and those breakdowns are still the same, the city has always been able to keep 28%. 70% is contracted with the chamber, which is required by state law in order to have a room tax. You have to contract to have a tourism entity, but the 2% is retained by the hotels to help them cover the processing, all the paperwork that gets sent to, to the...
Also, the 2% is, isn't?
I thought it was retained by the state, but I could be mistaken. I can definitely look into that.
I really think it's retained by the hotels.
Well, it's not a lot of money.
No.
It's not.
We're looking at this because I was given the message by a previous city manager that none of this can, the 28% can go to the city, so I'm trying to figure out what is true.
Well, I think... 28% goes to the city.
28% goes to the city.
But then I thought that 28% was going to be used by the people that put on this special presentation as far as historic background.
I think it goes into the general fund, and then our, I mean, this is not money that specifically is earmarked for anything when it comes in. So the money that comes in from the room tax goes into the general fund, just like any other money. And yes, if you look at budgets, it might in fact, you know, you could say, oh, part of that $10,000 is, you know, Cody's salary or something else.
So I'm just bringing it up because I want to learn precisely the legal basis for how this money is proportioned out. So that's what I'm asking.
I think we could probably, Ken, provide you with the state statute, because it's in the state statute.
It's a state statute.
It's in the state statute, and so perhaps Nicola can write down that we'll send you that state statute.
And I used to look it up in my, in my files for all these things, and that's why I'm asking the question. Thank you.
Suddenly. All right. Yeah, all right, Bob.
So is this just open questions for any of the department?
Yep.
Things?
I have another question.
Just a minute, it's Bob's turn.
Howard, I had a question about that Melvue Trail Connector Phase 1.
Yes.
And I know that had been delayed after the city bought the property because they had to do some changing to the plans. I'm curious why the Wisconsin Department of Transportation is pushing it that far out, like July 1, just for the bid? That just seems...
I wouldn't...
Seems far.
I understand, but what we were told was that because of delays in getting environmental clearances, we could not meet the deadlines for, for going out to bid this calendar year, so the DOT had to push the project into the next state fiscal year, which begins July 1. It's not because of what we did or some other thing. It just, they had, they had no other choice because of the delays in, in the other parts of it, that they had to put it into the next state fiscal year.
Thanks. I didn't realize the fiscal year started then. I was thinking that's wasting a lot of good time to work on it, but now I understand.
I would agree, but that's how it is.
Okay, so have we made people aware of this? Because somebody showed me a piece of paper today that said that the anticipated completion of this trail was yet this year in 2025, fall of 2025. So have we, have we advised PCA of where we are with this?
We certainly will. We meet with them monthly in regards to the new trail, so we'll make sure that they're aware of this as well.
I think sooner is, is better than later. So if we know this, it seems to me like, as quick as email is, it would be good to just do a quick email note to their person, either the president of the organization or the person, I don't know, do you call him an executive director? I don't know, the...
I thought I had done, I thought I had done that, but I will double check just to be sure.
Just double check. Okay. Any other questions and reports?
Yes, my only other question, I don't know if anyone would know this, because Bob's not here, but at Jenner Park, I was over there looking at the trees are going to be cut down, and the people in the park told me that pretty much all the lights are out. Were not working right then. Does anyone know if either lights have been fixed or bulbs have been replaced so that there is some light?
I would have to check with parks again. I know just recently we went through and fixed them all as they're, some of them were...
Okay, this was...
Assumed to be shot out.
I bet this was three weeks ago when I was there.
So they were, they were vandalized? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know. Historically, I thought we, when we did the retention wall and we did all of our new electrics, we put some time into making sure that the lights will work. I'd have to check and see if there's been some recent, if they went out or if they've been tampered with. I don't know. We'll have to investigate, but thank you for bringing that to our attention.
They may have been fixed by now. I just...
I'd like to answer that question.
Okay, Ken?
The last I looked at Jenner Park, I worked at it two years ago, Jenner Park, the lights there were broken and birds were living inside of the lights. So there were no lights there in certain location. So that's the responsibility of the parks and recreation people to take care of that.
Ken, have, have you been by Jenner Park lately?
I want to see, I'd have to go over there. You'll have to take a look too yourself to see if the lights are back and working. We need to go and do that.
No, I mean, just have you seen the improvements at Jenner Park? There are vast improvements at Jenner Park.
I've seen some improvement, but because of my health injury, I've had to stop going over there, but I'm intending to go back. So that needs to be checked on, and so that is a problem with the park. At one time in the park, the trees were not pruned off. There were, there was a dead tree over there left, and that's responsibility of the people in parks. They have to do that. The same thing is true, Howard. We looked at Jenner Park, and we found that there's a part over there where we wanted to cross the street from Jenner Towers, I guess is the name of the place, and you said we could not cross from Jenner Towers over to the park. So what is the status of that project as far as crossing over? As it is at right now, people come down that street, Mineral Street, and they drive both ways on a one-way street. So that is a problem there. And so we put up, we put up a sign across from what street was that Water Street, and that sign was ineffective as far as figuring out which way you're supposed to turn. So that's, that's a problem.
Ken, I'd like you to allow Lynn to say a few words, since she probably is at Jenner Park more than any of us.
Yeah.
Lynn?
Yeah, so...
Are the lights back?
So when I was, I dropped my dad off Sunday, he stayed with me all, I was there at night, lights were on. The lights are on, the trees are, I mean, they've done their job and worked on that. They even have the, I was fussing because now I had to figure out where to park because they've done the thing that they were going to do with the parking. It's pretty much up to, up to date. Like, I don't know if birds can live in the lights, but if they do, they shining bright on them. I think we're okay with Jenner Park. Thank you, Lynn.
All right.
I think we're pretty okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions on any other of the reports?
Another report on tourism, the person that was giving this said that this is about tourism, and the person said, through April 30th, our visitor count is even with last year, with little over 550 visitors coming through the Welcome Center. Our guests were primarily from Wisconsin, with Iowa and Illinois coming second and third. We have had three international visitors all coming from China. So what do you have on that, Cody, as far as an answer?
Cody? Is this on...
So that, I believe that report is through the chamber.
Is that through the chamber? And so that report is not coming from you?
No, I go to those meetings, but that report is from the chamber.
Okay.
Well, from what you're reading, I'm interpreting that that is Wayne's report that is given to that committee.
And so my, my question on this report is, where are the people going as far as tourism in Wisconsin?
I think that might be a little bit beyond the scope of that committee to determine...
Well, this is a question I'm asking.
Ken, we, the state publishes a tourism report by region. Perhaps we can find that and get you a copy of the tourism report by region. I know that Drew, Drew, Drew's last name escaped me. Drew comes and reports at various places about the amount of tourism to southwest Wisconsin, but there is a report published by the department.
So anyway, I want to see where they're going to, and this is an unknown to me as to who's reporting this. Thank you.
Okay.
I would appreciate answers to my questions.
Okay, we'll see if we can get the tourism report for you, and we'll see if we can get you the state statute relative to how room tax is allocated. That's the end of our reports in the packet. We'll move on to...
I have another one about the chief of police, and it's on 124, Chief of Police, it says something about, you had Officer Attendant at the annual Berry Fest event at Legion Field. They handed out baseball cards and cited a number of kids for speeding. Could you respond to that?
It was a euphemism.
Is that true?
We, it was a euphemism. People that have attended Berry Fest know that we give out speeding citations to kids.
So this is, this is just a general statement you made?
It was meant to be humorous.
And I saw down here at the bottom, it says that discussion on recruitment of a chief of police. I didn't realize the chief of police was going to be leaving.
He is.
So a potential timeline was discussed and potential elements that may be included in the hiring process. So you are leaving.
I discussed that with the city manager.
I can't say anything about good riddance or anything like that.
That's good.
You could give him a speeding ticket, though.
Euphemistically.
Okay, I think... Where are we at right now?
We're at the end of the reports, and we're moving into the action portion of our agenda. So the first item on your action portion of the agenda is the ordinance amending the official traffic map, no parking on the east side of Seventh Avenue. Howard?
Yes. We originally had some issues regarding parking on Seventh Avenue after the reconstruction. Since last meeting, traffic has reverted to the normal case, where there's only one or two vehicles parked on each block. This morning, there was one, there was basically one on each block.
69.
So the council may determine, may decide to approve the ordinance, or an alternate would be to table the action indefinitely, and that way, if it becomes a problem in, in the future, we don't have to go through the information and discussion. We could just go straight to action and just pull it off the table and take action if it came, if it became a problem in the future.
Any discussion?
Yes, I actually went over and looked at the street, and it's a relatively narrow street compared to, say, Camp. And I was talking to someone there, and I was there at 8:30 in the morning, and there were just bars on the two-block stretch. But I know this past weekend, there'd been a birthday there, and a lot of cars on one side, and there were a lot of cars on the other side, and, and it did make it basically a one-car lane in the middle. And so I know it doesn't happen often, but it can still happen. And I don't see an issue with having no parking on the west or the sidewalk side, or whatever the...
Be the east.
No, it'd be the east side because the sidewalk's on the west side. I think that would be a good ordinance to approve.
Did we have any other input from any of the property owners, Howard?
I have not heard from them. We, we sent the original letter prior to the August 26th meeting, basically saying that they could come and provide input. After the traffic reverted, I sent them a new letter saying what our intentions were and asked them to provide input, and I haven't heard anything since then from anyone. You know, originally it was because at least one of the residents complained about, you know, the parking and becoming effectively one lane of traffic, and that's where, that's where it was initiated.
I guess my opinion, unless we hear that it's an issue for the property owners, I would hesitate to restrict parking.
I would too.
I would too.
At this point, and I would prefer to look at tabling this for future, if, if the residents there, that live there are the ones that have the issue. I mean, granted, there may be events that happen, but then people move out and kids grow up, and then you may not have birthday parties there. You might have all retired people who want to park because they play hooker. I don't know.
If it was, it was a resident that shared that with me and shared the photos.
Okay. I would be curious if it was the someone to talk to.
Lynn, Lynn, did you have something?
I was just gonna agree. I was gonna agree with Kathy. I was just gonna say that too, because I, like, until the more than one person, it could be one person having an issue, but everybody else is fine. Is that fair to everybody else to shut it down because one person had an issue? So I would agree with you. I think we should table it until at least more of the community voices their opinions about it.
Ken?
Okay, I've looked at this, and I have two questions about this location. On one location, the curb goes right up to the mailbox, so the people on the right-hand side get their mail from the mailbox that is sending, that is standing next to the street. Now, the people on the other side, my question is, where do they get their mail from? Because there are no mailboxes standing over that I can see on the other side of the street. So do those people have to walk up to their house to get their mail? Is that what's taking place? So one side gets the mail by the post office driving up to drive up mailbox, and the other side, they get, they have to get out and walk across the street to the owner. Is that correct?
Ken, I don't think we have any idea what the post office does, and that's really not pertinent to the parking issue, I don't think.
I think it is too. It is too.
And it could be that the...
You know...
I think it is too. I think you're missing the issue.
And it could be everybody's mailbox is on the same side of the street.
No, it's not. Look at the mailboxes. There are no mailboxes on the left-hand side. Right-hand side, there are some mailboxes scattered along.
No, I mean, like, on my street, everyone's mailbox is on this one side of the street. Like on my street, everyone's mailbox is on this one side of the street.
Yes, but where, where are the mailboxes here on the other side?
And they probably on.
Have you looked at this?
They're not on that side.
Look at it.
We see that, but yeah, I don't know where the mailboxes are. And I don't think that the location of the mailbox was the question that people were having. So.
I think it is an issue because I live right next to it.
You live next to this street?
I lived with the same problem.
Oh, you live with the problem of a mailbox?
That's right.
All right, and it isn't the city that determines where mailboxes go.
Come around.
It is the postal service that determines where mailboxes are placed and what kind of mailboxes are placed.
Okay, I, I agree.
So it's, it's not really a city action.
I, I disagree with what you're saying here. You're not telling us what's right.
I, I'm not saying it's right. I'm just saying that the mail, the U.S. Postal Service determines where they're going to deliver your mail.
Well, then they're gonna have to, one side, they're gonna put it in the mailbox that's standing at the street point. And the other side, they're gonna walk across there and go up to the house.
I guess if that's what they determine they want to do, that's what they're gonna do. All right, so do I hear?
I move to table this action indefinitely.
So a motion to table requires a second? He's looking.
Yes.
I know it's not debatable.
It's not debatable.
So.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. A motion by Lynn and a second by Kathy to table this ordinance indefinitely. The ordinance eliminating parking on the east side of Seventh Avenue. Colette will vote.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Parrot? Motion carries.
Okay, so if we hear from the people on Seventh Avenue that they are in need of parking on one side of the street, we're ready with an ordinance if that becomes the case, but we don't need to make a bunch of laws that people don't need. Action item two or B is awarding of the pool demolition contract. I'm assuming that's going to be you, Clint.
Yes, Madam President, the City of Plattville has issued our request for proposals or our demolition package for demolition services in preparation for the reconstruction of the Plattville Aquatic Center. This demolition will focus on the removal and disposal of structures and surfaces detailed in those plan documents, which were prepared through our architect and are going to be managed through Epic Construction. Bids were opened on Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five at two P M. here in the council chambers. The city received five base bids from qualified contractors ranging from one hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred dollars to five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The lowest qualified bid was made by Owens Excavating of Cuba City in the Mount of One Ninety-Six Nine Hundred. Staff recommends authorizing Epic Construction, our construction manager at risk, to contract with Owens Excavating for the demolition and ground preparation of the Plattville Family Aquatic Center per the engineers' demolition plans and specifications. Sample language has been given to you, Madam President.
All right, any questions on this? Our construction manager at risk, Epic Construction would actually execute the contract. We basically recommend authorize them to execute a contract. And like Clint said, there were five bids, six, six potentials, but one, one company did not bid. Can somebody tell me what unit price number one and unit price number two mean?
I can do that. Unit price one is unit price per square yard. If they have to over excavate, dig down below if they find bad soils. And then unit price two is for the crushed aggregate, the, the good base rock to go back in.
Okay.
By ton.
There wasn't an explanation that, and I did not go back. Any other questions on the demolition bid packages? Ken?
Do I have the right numbers here? It says that the bid price is going to Owens Excavating, one hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so what I'm wondering about in that situation is that I believe you're putting up cement block walls. Is that correct?
This is not the fire station. This is the swimming pool. So I don't think that the swimming pool will have cement block walls.
Do you have, is this an issue that deals with the fact that you're working with the fire station?
It is not. This is the swimming pool replacement of the swimming pool, Ken.
But you're working on the demolition part.
Taking out the old swimming pool.
Curious as to where that project is.
Which project?
The the demolition is bars. You know, I don't see it listed here. Where is it at?
Demolition of.
So I'm looking at the project that you hired a company. We're looking at the fire station and you're putting up something that is going to have cement block walls. And cement block walls, as far as putting up this thing, are very poor as far as the ability to prevent falling over.
Okay.
Same thing is true for out at the, at the, out at the location that we have as far as with the fire, with the company out with the new, new the new
And this contract is in regards to the swimming pool, not the fire facility. And this is.
The swimming.
This will be the removal and the ground prep for reporing the new swimming pool, of which we're hoping to complete yet this fall before winter and weather comes in, if it permits. So we're not anticipating to use block on that project. It'll be a vertical work.
Cement block on that project?
Not on the pool, not as, for a demolition project here, no, there might be some. I'm sorry?
There would not be any cement block used in this demolition. They're going to take out the current broken swimming pool. All right, do I hear a motion?
Yes. I move to authorize Epic Construction, our construction manager at risk, to contract with Owens Construction for the demolition and ground preparation of the Plattville Family Aquatic Center.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize Epic Construction to contract with Owens Excavating and Construction for the demolition and ground prep for the family aquatic center, the swimming pool. Colette will vote.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, prior to this meeting tonight, we'll move on to our third agenda item. Prior to this meeting tonight, we had a special meeting and interviewed and met two candidates for our open position on the council. We met Steve Badger and we met Matt Niehaus. And at this point in time, rather than take nominations from the floor, what I would suggest is that everybody just simply write, unless you have questions. I guess we could have questions if anybody has questions. But if you would take your little pad that has been presented to you that has your name on it and you would write the name of the candidate that you suggest fill this position on that, then we will hand those to our clerk. And as soon as I find a pencil that has actual ink in it, I will write mine. And we'll see what we got. It does take a majority vote. So it means we have to at least have four people. And if, if that didn't happen, then I guess we'll vote again. And again, both of you, thank you for your applications and, and and for meeting with us tonight. Okay, Colette?
Okay.
We do not provide any money. We gave up our money a number of years ago. We used to get two hundred dollars a month. And the, and the chairman got two fifty. So if you want to bring us up with more money, that's fine. But I won't be able to accept it until, if I get elected again.
Okay, Colette.
All right. Lynn Parrot voted for Matthew Niehaus. Ken Killian voted for Stephen Badger. Barbara Dos, Steve Badger. Kathy Cap, Steve Badger. Tony McFaul, Matt Niehaus. And Bob Gates, Matt Niehaus. And we have a tie.
So now we have a tie vote, guys. So I guess you can see that, 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 that's basically, yeah, we're not gonna do, you know, one time, just as a point of humor, one point, at one point in time, and I'm sure the staff remembers this because they were appalled that I did this. We were debating which side of the street the sidewalk should go on and all the neighbors were here from both sides of the street. And I said, we really don't know how to settle this. How about a flip of a coin? And they said, fine, we flipped a coin and that's how we settled it. But we're not going to settle it for the flip of a coin, at least right yet. So we are going to, everyone, you have another piece of paper. Try again.
What's the story?
You have to vote on either Steve or Matt because we have to vote again. It was three, three.
Can I have you vote again, Ken?
Oh, okay.
We had a tie.
I'll be darned.
I'll be darned. Now, if everybody just switches their vote, we'll have another tie. I, I have been told, but I wasn't on the council at that time, that at one point in time, there was only six members that were serving on the council and they were trying to elect a chair. And it took them like four meetings to get it done because they just kept tying and nobody would change. And I guess, do you remember that, Howard?
I kind of remember something like that.
Yeah.
I can't remember how.
I'm not going to put the names out there of who it was, but just suffice it to say I'll try again. Which just shows that you both did a great job.
Ken Killian, Stephen Badger, Bob Gates, Matt Niehaus, Lynn Parrot, Matt Niehaus, Tony McFaul, Matt Niehaus, Barbara Dos, Stephen Badger, and Kathy Cap, Steve Badger. And we have a tie again.
I mean.
I've heard that there is a Department of Government Efficiency, but we may not want to use that title.
Right. I think, I think Nicola, who is from England, Nicola was making a joke. She was making a joke.
What is she about?
She, she was making a joke. So what I hear being done is I hear Matt withdrawing his candidacy. And Matt, we will keep your email address. You will be appointed to a board or commission probably at the next meeting. And Steve, we will swear you in at, at the next, at the beginning of the next meeting. Is that what we do? Colette?
Yes.
Okay, so we will swear you in at the beginning of the next meeting. You don't need to bring an entourage, but you're welcome to bring your children if you'd like. Don't expect, don't expect flowers, anything. So, but anyway, welcome aboard and thank you, Matt.
And that doesn't need a motion then, Barb?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess we do have a motion.
I think we should take a motion.
So who will make the mo, I make the motion, can I make a motion? Okay, I make a motion that Steve Badger fill the vacant council seat. Do I hear a second?
I don't.
Okay. Okay, we'll vote. McFaul?
But I'm gonna say no.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Parrot?
But I'm gonna say no.
Okay, well, there we go. All right, we have one other, we have no other action items tonight. We do have a information and discussion item and that is an RFP, a request for proposal for audit services. Nicola?
President? Sorry, I was distracted for a moment there. So if you'll just give me a couple more seconds to get to that page in our.
Ken, this is page one hundred and seventy-seven.
So it is the best practice as advised by the Government Finance Officers Association that government entities should undertake a full-scale competitive process for the selection of independent auditors at the end of the term of each audit contract. This does not mean that audit firm rotation should be mandatory, but rather that conducting an RFP process should yield the best combination of audit firm experience, availability, expertise, and cost. We have gone through an RFP process many times in the history of the city. And for, I think as far as living memory extends, our current auditors, Johnson Block, have been the winning auditor of that process. We, we last conducted an RFP process in twenty twenty-two and during twenty-three and twenty-four due to transitions and, and also with other financial matters that were going on, a lot of grant work and changes in government accounting standard boards, rulings and things like that. We, it was not the, the best time to go through an RFP process. However, we currently have stability in the city manager, administration director, and accounting and finance manager positions, who are all key aspects of the financial audit. And we have a fully trained finance team. And so staff believe that twenty twenty-five is a good year to request proposals for auditing services. The city is inviting qualified, independent auditors that are licensed to practice in the state of Wisconsin to submit proposals for the provision of auditing services as detailed in the request for proposal document that was included in the packet. The proposals will be evaluated by staff and a recommendation will be brought to the council for action. The RFP document is being provided in this packet for the council, for any feedback that the council might have for that document. But it is anticipated that the process timeline will be, that any feedback will be provided by the council today. And then the, the, the document will be distributed by the end of the week after any feedback is incorporated where, where pertinent. And then the deadline for proposal submission will be September the twenty-sixth. The review of proposals by staff will be the week that ends October third. Recommendation to council and information and discussion, October fourteenth, and then council action on the twenty-eighth. The cost of auditing services may increase or decrease as a result of this process. Are there any questions from the council?
Questions from the council. What has been the cost of auditing services?
We have a budget for audit services. Let me just double check that number for you. So we budgeted forty thousand in twenty twenty five for budget services and we spent in twenty twenty four, thirty nine thousand seventy nine dollars.
And does that include these single audits that you have to do?
Yes, it includes a single audit and it audits the TIFs. It incorporates the housing authority as well as all the other city funds.
Any questions? Kathy?
Nicola, the timeline again is, did I hear September, that the proposals are due September twenty sixth?
That, let me just go back there.
Yep.
Yes, that's correct.
So with today being the ninth and it seems short, tight, or is that, is it?
I think it's a reasonable amount of time. Auditing firms tend to, because this happens frequently, for auditing firms to submit proposals, they typically have template.
Template, okay.
Prepared and then they adjust those as needed for which municipality they are submitting for.
Ken?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to put this out for a future budget or change our auditor in the future?
If we have a significant change from what will be in the draft budget for the services that are proposed and the one that's selected, then yes, we would update the twenty twenty six budget for that amount.
Many council members help work with the budget. Years ago, I used to help work with the budget.
Thank you for that, sir.
I think we all work with the budget. That's what we've been doing with the.
We're in the Budget Committee.
Yeah. I think that's reverted to be staff and then all of the council.
Yes, ma'am.
But at that time, I was one of the members on the Budget Committee.
If anybody does. I have a question about the audit, RFP. How do you distribute that? So do you seek firms or do you expect them to somehow come to our website and know that we're asking?
It's my intent to distribute this in two ways, to publish it in various places where audit firms look for municipalities requesting proposals, but also to send it to any and all firm that has submitted proposals in the past so that they're aware that we are looking for proposals.
And also I want to bring up that the building inspector is going to be resigning pretty soon. So you have a tentative agenda set up as far as replacement of the building inspector? Will that be Joe, your territory for replacing the building inspector?
I think we're off, Madam President, I think we're off the subject of this one, but we can include that in the.
Through this whole thing that I went through here.
Right, so.
This whole thing.
Right, but at this.
That's what I read.
But at this point on the agenda, that is not a discussion item for tonight. So if you have specific questions, please reach out to Joe.
Reason here to ask that question.
Well, I understand you may have an appropriate reason to ask, so I'm asking you to ask Clint and Joe so that we abide by the open meeting law and stick to our agenda. So that's the end of our agenda for tonight.
Excuse me, but that, it is in this document right here.
It, we are past where it was in this document and Joe reported on it.
Disagree.
Okay, I would take a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Colette will vote.
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.